I see it's seven thirty, time for us to start our city council meeting this evening. I appreciate it. If you all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for our invocation this evening brought by Pastor Flannoy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eternal God and God and Father, we come before you with humble hearts and lifted spirits, thanking you for what you've done for us, especially the rest when you've done with your son, Jesus Christ, and his finished work on the cross. We ask that you continue to shower our city council, our mayor, and all the assistants with the direction and instruction that will benefit the citizens of Bonner Springs, that will be satisfying to you. When we've done with this, we can see that we get home safely and find everything that we left us as we left it, and teach us to love one another if you have loved us. We all pray that up in the family of the last word in this country, we ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. All right. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and get started with the meeting this evening, and the first item of which is citizens' concerns, items which are not on tonight's agenda. Anyone that would like to stand and address the city council about items not on tonight's agenda has that opportunity. Please come forward and state your name. Yep, go right ahead. There's a little button at the bottom of the microphone. There you go.
Yeah, okay. Hi, I'm Linda Harvath. I was an art teacher at Bonner Springs High School for thirty-nine years before retiring in 2014, and I've decided, I've been active in the community with the Bonner Springs Arts Alliance and the NAACP and the library and various activities here throughout the years. I continue to be active in them. And I decide I know enough people in this surrounding area that we should have a book about stories that preserved life by military and first responders. So I've decided to self-publish the book and provide the funds to do so. And what I've done is I've had a handout passed out to each of you that has the invitation to participate and submit stories. On the backside of the invitation, I have some guidelines of some of the questions that I'd like people to respond to for the stories. And I'm asking from each and every one of you to give me contact names and contact information for people that you think should be included in the book. And the book will be just a six-by-nine-inch book with a perfect binding on the edge. It'll have a laminated color cover, and the inside pages will be black and white and have a few black and white photos with them that the people are submitting with their stories. And on the stories, so far, what I've collected, they will be from the Baser, Piper, Bonner Springs, Edwardsville, and a few KCK stories from people in this area, is what I'm collecting, not going beyond. And currently, I have eleven stories of this week written, and I'm meeting with the contact. If they've completed some of the sheets, some of them have actually written their story. I requested one from Joseph Wood, Chris's son, who decided to write his own story, did a fabulous job. I gave him an A-plus as his former student. And Jerry Jarrett, I have had this on my mind for a couple of years and was fortunate enough to convince him to let Aleah, his daughter, interview him, and it happened four weeks before his death. So I was able to go through the phone. It wasn't real clear. Had to listen several times because of the way the recording was just done on a cell phone. But I was able to write a story with combination. Then I meet with family members as well for additional comments. And on people that are currently living, I meet with them, do an interview, and get some quotes to include in their story. After I have written the draft, I send them the copy. They give me approval or any revisions in case I've messed up some name or some date, or maybe in the three-hour interview that they said something they really don't want to see in print, then they have the option to give me revision before the final draft. And with me working on the project is Anita Scheikels, who did our monument at the North Park. She did all the etching and fundraising for that. And she will be working with me because some of these stories will be engraved on the polished granite, and those last, they're guaranteed for four hundred years. So they'll last a lifetime and then some. And so I've also included on the handouts for anyone that would like to order an individual plaque for some member that they know, whether it be a current first responder, or a current military, or a retired one, or a deceased one, you know, all these stories are what I'm looking for because there's lots out there. And the book will just, I originally planned on thirty stories, but I'm just going to make a fatter book when I receive excellent stories. So are there any questions? And what I have there is my email contact, and I'm hoping to hear from several of you any suggestions of who you recommend that I include in there in the book. I have one from fire department, one from, two from EMS, several military. One of the stories is from one lady. She was working at the Pentagon on nine eleven, and she is a writer herself. She totally wrote her pages for the story, her story, and will be printed just as she has written them. So, so far, I'm excited about it. And my goal is to have it completed by Veterans Day in November this year and hopefully have a celebration at North Park to celebrate it. And so I'm asking for you to try to contact me ideally by no later than the end of February, so I can get all the interviews done and the written portion done and the printing and meet my deadline. Okay?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Warvath. I appreciate that. Maybe we can get some of that information pushed out on our social media posts and.
Thank you. And if you have any questions, just email me at harvatbale@sunflower.com.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else that would like an opportunity to address the city council about items not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none. Moving forward, our next item of business is approving the agenda and the consent agenda, which includes, the consent agenda includes the minutes from the January ninth city council meeting and claims for city operation. Anything to be pulled by staff, citizens, questions or concerns from the council? Entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. So moved by Mr. Shannon and, or Mr. Reeves and seconded by Mr. Shannon. Vote, please.
Long?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. On to old business. One item, continuation of code violation administrative citation appeal for eight-twenty North Nettleton. Staff?
Good evening. Amber Vogon, Assistant City Manager. We have Guy Tyner here who can speak to any work that he's done since the last time that you all spoke with him.
Very good.
I worked on the brick on the side of that thing and brought my loader down there and started cleaning the back of it up, haul three or four loads of trash off. There was people dumping around that thing. And boarded the windows up and tried to get it to a safe spot to start looking at it. The back of that building's probably going to have to be torn off because it's in such bad shape. The front of it is okay. And we did some tuck point on it, on some of it. It's going to take quite a bit of work. And if that corner's going to be, do something with it, there's going to have to eventually have sewers brought up there. And that corner really needs to be turned commercial, and something done with it was small, you know, that upgrades that corner, makes it look nicer. But that older building probably should stay. It's kind of a piece of the past in Bonner. It's been there for a long time. So is there any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Tyner? Not that I know of. Your plan is to keep that for historic value?
Yes, I'd like to. I mean, I'm not real quick right now because I got thirty things going instead of three. And, but we got on it this week. Like, we put all those bricks on there and cleaned, and cleaned that thing up. And I'm planning on pushing all the trees down back. We actually turned the loader over. We got down below and if they, if there's a foot fee to the bottom, it runs some other things. And the bucket started extending and fell forward. So I got a guy down with a backhoe to pull it back up, and it fell over again. So, but that bank is real steep up there and those trees. We started cleaning the trees off on the south side of that and started cleaning back toward the north. And I got about a third of the way done. So it's going to, it's going to take some more time and effort to get that done.
Thank you.
And Mark, I guess Mark Stites came up and looked at all that. Did he give you a report?
That's what I'm going to get to. Thank you very much. Mr. Stites, do you have anything to add?
There was an effort, excuse me, there was an effort trying to get things. Most of the windows were boarded up on it. Part of the bricks he was talking about on the corner, part of them were tucked in and stuff like that. But we still have all the, a lot of bricks around the, around that area that are in really bad shape. The back of the building, like you said, is falling in and caving in on itself. Part of the roof on that, it has an add-on to the back of the building, and it's in really bad shape.
In your opinion, it does not appear as though the unlawful conditions have been abated completely?
No.
And there are still nuisance conditions that exist?
Yes, sir.
Right, thank you. Any other staff? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt a resolution setting a public hearing at seven-thirty P.M.
No, 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 we're on old business right now.
I'm sorry. Right here. Make a motion to adopt the resolution, option A, B, C, or C. Thanks a lot. Oh, let me read this first, Mr. Mayor.
Certainly.
Forgive me. Okay. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt a resolution ordering the abatement of the nuisance conditions and enforcing the administrative citations on file, including, and not including the administration citation on January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Including.
So moved? And there's a second. So moved by Mr. Shannon, seconded by Mrs. Gurley, and we'll all start with questions, concerns, comments. With you, Mr. Shannon.
I'll hold off right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sir?
Just real quickly, Mr. Stites, if you'd like to step back up there. You say there had been some effort, though?
There has been.
Would you say, if you had to say a percentage of where we were to completely abated?
Seventy-five percent of the windows have been boarded up, and ninety percent of the brick and tuck point had been done, but there's still brick and everything along the corner of Nettleton and Metropolitan. The worst part is the back corner where it's falling in, and that hasn't been addressed at all.
Will that be, need to be completely removed before you'll consider that abated then? That's part of the violation is?
Yeah, yes.
It needs either secured or removed, one or the other, right?
I spoke with, Guy Tyner called me today and was talking about that back addition and was saying that it just needs to be taken off. So that's, was what his plan is, is to remove the add-on of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Stites? Mr. Stites, Stites, I admit that there has been some work done. Now, there's still quite a bit of work to go. Are we staying after this to get this building up into a shape where it's presentable to the community? Because like I said, there's lots of paint missing. There's boards that are rotted that need to be replaced.
There are more things that need to take place on this building, painting, trim, things like that. I was addressing the main part of the building right now, just to get it, I didn't want to worry about trim not being on there painted if the whole back of the thing is falling off, so.
I'm just saying, yes, I agree with those things that are getting done, but then there's a conundrum of things after that that still need to be done.
So as far as the nuisance codes and the administrative citations, that's what this hearing is about. The next two items on the agenda address a condemnation hearing.
Okay.
All right, nothing else?
Nothing else for now.
Other bricks and debris that you see beside the building, at one time, they burned fuel oil in that building. And there's a pit down there on the side, and those things have been there for forty, fifty years. I'm not saying they don't need to be removed. But like they said, there was two things on that item, and those things were resolved. That one window, the electrical came in the bottom window, and there was a window on that building for twenty, thirty years, on the bottom side of that building. We took a saw and sawed the pipes off and pushed all those inside and pulled them back outside. And I know that I, I got a notice and ignored that thing for a while.
So the fuel oil that was stored there will have to be remediated?
Well, I don't think so. I think it's a tank.
Yeah, those.
It's still got the old fill lid and stuff, and the broken-up debris that's there is from that fill lid and from, from that. So there's something that needs to be done about that, but I'm going to jump in. You know, we're talking about two, three hundred thousand dollars to do that, clean that corner up. And it's going to take some time and planning. And councils, and I don't want to be critical, but I can be sometimes, councils and stuff, a lot of times don't understand what it takes to do these things.
We're trying to, and that's why we're working our way through it. But I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
But I'm here now. I'm here now.
And that's why we're going through it like we're doing it.
Turnover machines.
Yep, that's why we're doing it. Thank you.
So, you know, in Kansas City, Kansas, they started with this apartment deal that we had in there.
We're gonna, I'm gonna, we're gonna have more time to go through this, but that first item, I'm gonna keep this on the Bonner Springs, continuation of code violations, administrative citation appeal.
We have two of them that we're going outside of that.
We're coming right next.
Thank you.
Yep. There's a motion and a second. Vote, please.
Voting on a motion to adopt a resolution ordering the abatement of the nuisance conditions and enforcing the administrative citations on file, including the administrative citation on January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. On to new business. The next item, the resolution setting a hearing for eight-twenty North Nettleton.
Amber Vogon, Assistant City Manager. I put in your packet the resolution to set a hearing for a condemnation for March twenty-seventh. At that hearing, the owner will be able to come forward and either give you a plan for, to remediate the concerns of the building and the blight. There's a memo in there with all of the findings from our nuisance code officer, our fire department, and our IBTS, which is our building official, that listed all of the issues at the building as they stand. The pictures that are in the packet, those were taken late last week, and the condition remains the same today. At the March twenty-seventh meeting, the owner will be able to give his plan or either, or say why he believes it should not be condemned. I believe March twenty-seventh, yes? I'm sorry, it should say March twenty-seventh. Can you change?
Very good. Any other staff? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt a resolution setting a public hearing at seven-thirty P.M. on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, to determine why the structure located at eight-twenty North Nettleton Avenue should not be condemned and ordered repaired or demolished.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Moved by Mr. Shannon, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Questions, concerns, or comments? We'll start down here, Mr. Reeves.
Amber's already answered my questions.
Thank you.
Just real quickly, we're, the, the owner will have an opportunity to present a potential plan. Will that plan need to be, go through planning to make sure it's viable? You know, you can just come in and say, I got a plan, and it's not viable, and there's no timelines or anything set on it, so.
Right. At that hearing, you would set a timeline, giving him so much time to move his plan forward. And at that point, if it's not moved forward, if there's been no progress, or there can't be progress because it's hit a hitch with planning commission or something like that, then you could take further action at that point.
Okay, so it will go through the proper channels?
It would have to go through the proper channels, yes.
Thank you.
No other questions or concerns? Vote, please.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley? McMahon?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Very similar. Item number two is a resolution setting a hearing for one-three-one-oh-three Metropolitan Avenue. Ma'am?
Hello. This is the same as the resolution for the hearing at eight-twenty North Nettleton. The one-three-one-zero-three Metropolitan is the duplex behind it and the accessory buildings that go along with it. Again, you had a statement of findings and a conclusion in there from our building official, fire department, and nuisance code officer. And the hearing would also be for March twenty-seventh.
Very good. Thank you. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt a resolution setting a public hearing at seven-thirty P.M. on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, to determine why the structures located at one-three-one-zero-three Metropolitan Avenue should not be condemned and ordered repaired or demolished.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Stevens and seconded by Mr. Reeves. And because of that, we'll start with questions, concerns, comments down here. Any? Mr. Reeves?
Nothing extra. Nothing here.
Goodness. All right. Vote, please.
Kip?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Very nice. We'll be, sounds like we'll be seeing you again on March twenty-seventh. Thank you very much. On to item number three, the Downtown Master Plan, Planning Sustainable Places Grant.
Amber Vogon, Assistant City Manager. This is a Planning Sustainable Places Grant from Mid-America Regional Council. This item would authorize our city manager to execute the agreement with Mid-America Regional Council for the program. And what they'll do is guide us through a downtown master plan process. The total grant is seventy-five thousand is the total project expense. Our local match is fifteen thousand, and the grant award from Mark is sixty thousand. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Other staff?
The only thing I'll add, this, this is a master plan that has gone through a competitive process through the Mid-American Regional Council. They evaluate it based off, obviously, their application pointing, point system. A lot of things are included within this, within the downtown area, to include some consideration for the river, riverfront, as well as connectivity, basically the spoke of a wheel, as far as how sidewalks and trails and what have you can connect into our urban core. So a really exciting project that was, again, selected through a competitive process across the entire region, so.
Very good. Nothing else? No citizens? None. I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion authorizing the city manager to execute the Mid-America Regional Council's Planning Sustainable Places Program local match agreement.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Stevens and seconded by Mrs. Long. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start down here, sir.
I was impressed with what could happen. And I didn't know there was a disadvantaged business enterprise goal, you know, to learn things like that. Wow.
Does our match portion come just from the general fund, or do we have that earmarked somewhere?
It would come from the general fund, so that's part of the reason it's on tonight as one, just to make sure everybody's aware that this agreement is being approved and then obviously signed. And then the allocation would have to be something that either we would absorb within our budget through twenty twenty-three, or once we get closer to the end of the year, if we need to reappropriate out of reserves. I don't think that that's probably, it won't be an issue.
Thank you.
If approved this evening, since there's, I guess there's supposed to be a setup for meetings, including, you know, for the general public to be able to voice their opinion on, how soon will those, start to coordinate those meetings?
So once this is approved, a lot of this is in Mark's hands. So they will actually, and by Mark, I mean Mid-American Regional Council, that gets confusing with too many Marks.
Not these two Marks, okay.
But they actually facilitate a lot of the process and ultimately go through that selection process in tandem with, with city staff. So, but as, as you pointed out, this is meant to be a very inclusive process as far as public engagement is concerned. So I don't have a specific timeframe for you just yet, but for those that were, were on the council or are part of the Tri-City Multimodal Redevelopment Plan, there were several opportunities, both in-person, online, surveys, all of that. So I anticipate a similar program to that.
But I didn't know if it was going to be spring, summer, fall?
It would be, I don't have a timeframe. I don't think they've given us one. Typically, these are about eighteen months, just in terms of start to completion. So like I said, as soon as we get this over to them and have the contract in place, I would think probably within the next ninety days, they would be out for bid, or an RFQ, that process, and then hopefully have somebody on by optimistically summer. But that's just kind of me, you know.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, at the end of the.
Yeah, at the end of this, I wasn't sure what the timeline was. Is there some kind of evaluation at the end that lets us know where we stand? About when would that be to?
Said, I don't, I don't have a timeframe necessarily until we get a contractor on board, but the plan would be certainly to come back to the, the city council, more than likely the planning commission as well, and present the findings and the information off of this just to make sure that, uh, obviously, anything that's being recommended within this plan are, are things that you all agree with. But I don't, like I said, I don't have a, I don't have a timeframe quite yet, but as soon as we get that.
That's fine. I just, if there was something, I wanted to know.
Yep. As soon as, as soon as we know, we'll, uh, we'll make sure all of you do as well.
Okay. Thank you, Sean.
No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote please.
Stevens?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Macmahan?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Onto item number four, the Lexus Nexus User Service Contract. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, Billy Knapp, Chief of Police. What I have before you tonight is a, an agreement with Lexus Nexus. This is a program that we've used since I've been here, which allows us to do deep, in-depth searches on complex criminal investigations that we utilize. It also helps when we're trying to locate individuals, we can do queries to try to locate when they've moved addresses and gone to different places. As well as, as you've probably seen through the attachments, there's a litany of other searches that we can do. What we found about four months ago is we originally were participating in a flat rate fee search and then cost per search. We quickly exceeded what would be a unlimited program and so that's why we're bringing this before you to go ahead and move forward with the unlimited program. And we would work to just pay for that, the variable balance out of our own budget, operating budget in 2023. Happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Any other staff? Citizens? Questions, concerns? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the Nexus Lexus User Service Agreement for the amount of $4,400 and authorize city manager to execute the document.
Second. So moved by Mr. Reeves and seconded by Mr. Shannon, and we'll start right here with questions.
If it's been working, we want to keep going, right? Yeah.
Nothing here.
I, I missed something along the way here. Is it Lexus Nexus or Nexus Lexus? In the article, it goes both ways.
It's Lexus Nexus and we also call it Accurate, so it depends on which,
let's call it that.
Which one they go by.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
This document that's attached is dated December of 2020. Is there gonna be any change to anything, dollar figure, anything? Since we've passed that?
No.
Just checking.
No other questions, concerns? Vote please.
Macmahan?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And hope you don't have to use it. Next item is item number five, the Kubota KX080 Excavator Purchase.
Good evening. Matt Beetz, Deputy Director of Public Works. Tonight's, let's see, this item is to replace a 2004 case backhoe with a new excavator used by the street department and the parks department. We're we'd like to use the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contracts for this, and this is one of those items. This vehicle, this piece of machinery would allow us to also use it for right-of-way clearings through a few attachments that we've included in our price here. We're trading in the backhoe. It was actually, this year, we had in the 2023 budget to replace a 1994 Skidsteer Uniloter, but we use this one around the shop still quite a bit and it still operates functionally for what we need. This backhoe that we're talking about replacing now, been having some problems with it over the last year or so. So we're suggesting to kind of flip these around right now and go forward with replacing this one this year. And I think the backhoe is scheduled for a couple of years out still, but I can answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Any other staff? Citizens? Questions or concerns? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the purchase of a Kubota KX080 Rubber Track Excavator from Coleman Implement Equipment, I'm sorry, for the amount of $115,746.46 and authorize the city manager to execute the documents.
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Shannon and seconded by Mrs. Gurley. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start right here, sir. No questions.
Sounds wonderful.
Go get it.
Nothing. No other questions or concerns? Vote please.
Wood?
Yes.
Reeves? Shannon?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Macmahan?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Onto item number six, which is the 2023 BC1500 Vermeer Chipper Purchase. Staff?
When I started here, 2006, we had a chipper. It was old when I started here and we ran into a lot of problems with it over the years. Got to the point where we literally would go out and rent another one and not use it. So a few years ago, we chose to get rid of the thing. We actually just auctioned it off, got rid of it. We said, hey, we're gonna keep renting a chipper. It's getting harder and harder for us to actually rent a chipper at this point in the public works department. There always, there's not enough of them around and it seems like they're always rented out. So it's causing a problem with this crews to actually use, you know, to have one available when they need one. This last year, I think we've been trying to keep track of how much we've been spending on it and even renting one, probably approaching probably at least 20% of what it would cost to buy one just in one year alone. So we went out and got quotes again this year to actually buy a replacement chipper for this reason. The Mid-Mare Chipper is one that we've, we've actually, over this last couple of years, we're renting them. It's given us a really good chance to actually try out several different ones and models. And we've actually, our crews have all really liked this, this line of chipper, so. That's what we're basically asking now, is we'd like to go ahead and purchase one this year. We had in our 2023 budget for a F-150 pickup truck. However, buying them through the cooperative purchasing, it's becoming more and more difficult, believe it or not, for us to do it. And there's not available. Usually, I'd almost have to turn my bids in, I'd say probably by November before they're closing through the co-op. And by the time January rolls around, I've already missed the cutoff date, so I'm not usually able to get one. Or I haven't been able to the last couple of years. So we'd like to use the money that we had allocated for a new truck in 2023 to actually purchase this chipper.
Any others, any other staff? Seeing none, citizens? Questions, concerns? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a 2023 BC1500 Vermeer Chipper from Vermeer Great Plains for the amount of $67,656.21 and authorize the city manager to execute the documents.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Gurley and seconded by Mrs. Woods. Questions, concerns, comments? And we'll start down here, sir.
Looks like a wonderful machine.
Pretty neat machine.
Just one comment. Just one comment. You came in here with a lot of confidence because you're using the, the savings on the dump truck purchase, which hasn't occurred yet. It's next up on the agenda. Just thought I'd point that out. That's it. Nothing else here.
It, it does sound like a great piece of equipment, although you said it looks like a great piece of equipment. I'd love to see pictures of it, but.
Google is great.
And you don't, yeah, and you don't, and you don't let city council or mayors use it too.
Well, I mean, you wouldn't put on a hard hat and some gloves so we can
I was gonna say.
Go flush them right away if you like.
And, and take to OSHA training for probably six hours. That, that's a piece of equipment that could be very dangerous too. So I'm glad that we're considering keeping up to date on those type, that type of equipment as well.
This chipper will actually chip up a 15-inch diameter log.
Wow.
Yeah, it's pretty amazing to watch one go through it when it does, so.
Yeah.
We'll use the, we use a lot with when we're doing right-of-way clearing. Right now, what we're having to do is we're actually going out, cutting them, cutting them by hand, loading them into a trailer, hauling them back down to the shop, and then we'll burn them down there. Because we don't have a chipper available, but when we do have, when we have one, either rented or we'll have this one, we would be able to just blow them into the back of the dump truck and then we have chips. They've used the chips like at, up on the disc golf course, areas like that, so.
Somebody make a Fargo reference, please.
No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote please.
Kip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Macmahan?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. And on to our next item, which is number seven, our last one this evening, Freightliner Dump Truck Purchase.
Well, since I'm here, I'm.
Yeah, I was gonna say, with that, we're all waiting.
Well, yeah, I guess, you know, you have to prove it now because you proved it right. The 2023 Freightliner Dump Truck. This is a replacement truck to our oldest one in the fleet, which was a 2009 International. The International is actually starting to experience some issues with the motor, typical around this age anyways, so. This is a replacement for the oldest truck in the fleet. Staff has worked pretty good well with the vendor here to develop a set of specs for this truck. And it'll also bring this truck up to a more modern standard for us as, if, when we're out plowing snow, for instance. Currently, right now, this original 2009 truck, a lot of the stuff inside is all, you know, gears and knobs and to run the plow up and down, right, left, turn on the spreaders and stuff. And the new ones are actually all electronic, so they are a lot easier to operate. It's much easier for the crews that are actually driving the truck in the snowstorm to operate the vehicle safely, so. Amongst other things, but that's one of the big things on this new truck. The other thing is, is it actually have a stainless steel bed on the back of it instead of a steel, which we're kind of moving our fleet that direction now. It look better, they hold up a lot longer, they don't rust out as bad, so. Anyways.
Very good. Thank you. Other staff? Citizens? Questions or concerns? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the purchase of a 2023 Freightliner Dump Truck from Premier Truck Group of Kansas City for the amount of $149,828 and authorize the city manager to execute the document.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Reeves and seconded by Mrs. Woods. Questions, concerns, comments? And I think we're back to starting with you.
Oh, all right. So we wouldn't get this in time for tomorrow night's snowstorm, would we?
Unfortunately, no. We're, the last one we ordered, it took almost a year and a half to get it. Yeah, it was a really long time. This one here, I'm being told it's gotten a lot better. It's closer to probably this next, sometime this fall, we'd actually show up. But they're made in a, this one's most likely we made in just outside of Charlotte, North Carolina. And by the time it gets here, gets outfitted with the bed and all the other stuff, it ought to be maybe October-ish, I'd say. But I won't hold my breath. It says 2024 S.A. Dump Truck. Is that because it was later in the year? Down there on the specification on the right-hand side of the price? It's a 2023 or? I believe it's 2023. Yeah, it should be a 2023.
Nothing here.
Nothing. Nothing here.
The 2009 Dump Truck, the oldest one?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the one that has a bed that dumps sideways?
No, that's the small truck for the utility department.
How old is it?
It's not as old as this one.
Really?
It's probably 2013?
I remember and was, it's stuck in my memory that one of the beds on one of the dump trucks will dump sideways as well as backwards.
Yeah, that's that little, we call it the little dump truck with utilities.
The little dump truck that could. Just wondering. Thank you. No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote please.
Long?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Macmahan?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Rounds out our action items and moves us right into our reports. First of which this evening is our city manager's report.
All this talk about snow, I was, I was really scared, excited about it because it's not a motor grader with a belly blade or something like that that I'm used to having to deal with where I come from, so. Anyway, I do want to, I just thank, I had the opportunity to meet and have lunch with John Deardoff, who is the Executive Director in term right now with the League of Kansas Municipalities. The League is a a great outfit that we're a part of, a member of, that at this point in time is is very important to us as far as the legislature is concerned, especially with city and local government concerns continuing to be topics of consideration, so. Like I said, I, I was able to meet with him and continue to express our support for their efforts on that. I know there are several pieces of legislation and I think we're only a week into the legislature coming forward with a whole bunch of matters concerning local governments. So as those things come forward, I'll make sure to make sure you all are aware of what those are. Do also want to thank everybody that was part of the Martin Luther King Junior Celebration the other week, was there. I know several of you were there as well and several in the audience, the staff members. It's just nice to have an event where people are back together again, so. Then I also want to make sure everybody's aware, I did have the opportunity to reach out to the Unified Government about some funding that they've had approved for specifically the city of Bonner Springs. That was Sci-Fi program, which I believe, and I'm still, I can never remember what the acronym is, there we go, but County Investments in Financing Infrastructure, I believe, is the best one I've come up with. We're hopeful to have a conversation about that in the next few weeks about how that funding will come to the city and hopefully we can get that allocated into our street program for 2023. Also had the opportunity to talk with Commissioner Markley today concerning the ARPA allocation that the Unified Government provided, both the cities of Bonner Springs and Edwardsville, so. Hopeful to get some additional information about exactly how that is to come to the city. I know we've got several projects for the city that could certainly be aided with, with that investment, so. With that in mind, I did bring up at the last council meeting, the water plant. We are looking to maybe push that back until March just because of the weather more specifically as far as the groundbreaking is concerned, so. More to come on all of that. And then we, as quickly as we get done with the budget, we started anew. So in February, we'll plan to have some additional workshops before the city council meetings to discuss just more year-end review for the departments, so just want to make sure that was on everybody's radar. So the, the two meetings in February, we'll likely have some time spent just again reviewing, reviewing the high notes for departments throughout the city. I believe that is all I have for today.
Very good. Well, thank you. Moving right along to city council items, and just because we haven't picked on you much, we'll go ahead and offer you the opportunity to bring any items forward. Okay. Ma'am?
Just remember the morning mingle with the Bonner Springs Police Department.
Tomorrow from nine to eleven at the new Oak Street?
No. Oak Street is given the stuff, but.
It's at the police station.
In this great big conference room, right? Yes. At, that building next door.
Very good.
The police station?
Yeah.
I saw on, on Nextdoor that they were talking about having a Unified Government Waco KCK Law Enforcement Advisory Board. I don't know if you saw that or read that on there. Are we part of that? Is that something we attend? Because it says, you know, Unified Government, and then it just says all across Kansas City, Kansas conveniently leaving us out. I don't know if that's something we need to be a part of or.
Watching that, too. It's a listening tour.
Yeah, it's a listening tour, but I didn't know if that's something that we can host here or not. Like to be a part of if it makes sense. Other than that, nothing.
Real quickly, did I understand you, Sean, that, that restarting the Sci-Fi funding up?
So, I'm told. So, that was part of the budget that was approved by the commission late last year, the details of which I'm still fuzzy on, but I, I did reach out to them last week, which preempted this conversation I'll, I'll have next week, just about the details. Because again, if we're going to utilize the funds, Matt typically is out for bid with these things in the early part of the year. So, if there's going to be some additional funding coming in, we, we'd like to know that sooner, sooner than later, so that we can program that accordingly and make sure that we're getting the most, the best bid we can with the amount of money we have allocated.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, I think it was County Infrastructure Financing Initiative, wasn't it?
I bet you're right.
I think that's what it was.
Sounds good to me.
Well, I'm going with it. Everybody's going to call me wrong. That's it.
Happy to be here.
Very good. Yeah, that, that's always been something that when they don't seem to spread that around, it's easy to forget what it's called and what the acronym stands for. So, any input you have, we appreciate it, and the persistence to continue to chase after that is very valuable, very important. They have a lot of challenges, and making sure they're aware of all the concerns and, and the needs out here is very important. I went and was very warmly received at the last county commission meeting and plan to make that a regular occurrence going in, just making mention, I hope to make mention about some of our departments and what all's going on in the future on each of those. And I made them aware of the, the water treatment plant and the grants that we received this last time, so, and were well received. Also, on a side note, the, helping with the County Administrators Search Committee, and that's moving forward and moving through some applicants. And February seventh, I believe there's a meet and greet, and that's being pushed out by the Unified Government Social Media. And if you'd like to meet the applicants, you're welcome to attend that. Other than that? The, the, Matt's still here. The new brine treatment that we use for snow removal, how was that, how did that do on the last snow? Well, I noticed, we, we kind of talked about that, or someone did, and made mention of that, and right at the beginning of that last event, there was some moisture, at least where I was at, that hit first, so I didn't know if that affected that or. I don't know if it was enough, but. Are you planning on using that again this? Very good. And that's just, so everyone knows, that's like a salt solution that you put down first, so it lowers the freezing temperature and don't have as much of a chance for that to stick.
It's a, basically, it's the road salt. You can put water and create a run. And I find that if you put road rock salt down, it can help with the melt. So, this is where we're going. We're going to add that. And it helps break the pond and the water comes through.
As long as that doesn't slide off the road, we're in good shape. Was there a question concerning that? Other than that, I hope everybody's safe during this next storm event and enjoy it if you'd like to, so. Other than that, I stand for questions? Seeing none, we are adjourned.